I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is public comments on agenda items. The public comment period is a time slot set aside on the agenda for citizens to address the Board of Education. The open meetings law does not require that citizens be allowed to participate and speak at Board of Education meetings other than public hearings. The law specifies that the public has a right to attend board meetings except for executive sessions. The procedure for public comment is outlined in Board Policy 1230, Citizen Participation. A total of thirty minutes is set aside for public comment at the beginning and the end of the meeting. The maximum time allowed for any one speaker is three minutes. Public comments at the beginning of the meeting are limited to items on the agenda. Persons who wish to participate in the public comment portion of the meeting must state their name and a specific topic about which they wish to speak. As speakers must limit comments to issues appropriate for public discussion, compliments or complaints about student discipline, specific student issues, or personnel must not be addressed during public comments. The Board of Education recognizes its responsibility to hear and respond to public comments. As stated in Board Policy 1230, the Board is not able to answer questions at the meetings, but welcomes your statements. Any questions from the public should be submitted through the use of the public comment form, which may be obtained online or at the desk with the district clerk. Responses will be provided within forty-eight hours on the district's public comment responses page so that everyone may receive the information.
Good evening, my name is Roisin Deruda. I am speaking in favor of Agenda Item 8.01, Approval of Community Resolution. Let me start by reading this. "The mission of Wapageur Central School District is to empower all of our students with the competencies and confidence to challenge themselves, to pursue their passions and to realize their potential while growing as responsible members of the community." How are our kids supposed to do that with Common Core in place? You, as a Board, refuse to listen to the community. We have spoken out, we have had our kids opt out of the high-stakes test, a whopping 240,000 statewide, including a vast percentage from our district. We have gone to the polls and we will do so again. Here is one point you must recognize. Common Core, or any federal educational mandate, is in direct violation of the Constitution. The Tenth Amendment of the Constitution states allows the state's power of anything otherwise not specified in other amendments. Education is granted to the local communities. The states are not comprised of boundaries on a map, but of we, the people. Therefore, it is our responsibility, in this community, and you as a Board, to approve developmentally appropriate educational curriculum for our children. Common Core is not developmentally appropriate. And, we do not want it. It also holds our teachers hostage because of the rating system. One other point. This Board remains 100% fiduciarily responsible to us, the community. We elected you, not the state. Listen to us, we are not idiots, we know what we want. Remember your place, because we will on May 17th. Thank you.
Good evening, Board of Education Superintendent, members of the community. My name is Ed Slowshower, town of East Fishkill. Agenda Item 6.01, Additions to the Budget. At the last meeting, there was a presentation, materials and resources, reinstatement of teaching supplies and building budgets cut in previous budget cycles. Classroom, student furniture, parental workshop sessions, classroom libraries, universal screener, freshman sports, entry mirrors at junior high school levels, technology advances, tri-state evaluation for special education, totaling $8,227. Tonight, there is a line item that states a $23,771 increase to supplies to teachers. What is the breakdown of that? Are they getting the money to spend, or is the $23,000 worth of supplies then going to be divided up amongst the teachers? How much is each teacher actually getting? Can you provide a quick explanation between each of these presentations? There is an increase to tax books, K through 12, for $97,274 for a total budget of $821,274 for the next school year. What are we spending this additional money on? Can you please provide the taxpayers an itemized list of books to be purchased, as well as what is being purchased for that $821,274? I ask this because this coincides with Agenda Item 8.02. Agenda Item 8.01, Community Resolution. This resolution appears to be a direct response to a Board resolution that was passed on February 8, 2016, to express the district's position on the Common Core learning standards. So let's quickly review the district policy on this, and please correct me if I'm wrong. District Policy Manual, Section 2000, Title, Agenda Preparation and Dissemination Regulation, Number 2342-R, Status is Active. Agendas to the Docket, Item E. Requests for Agenda Items not submitted in time for inclusion in the printed Agenda must be approved by five or more Board members in order to be considered as a matter of business in the proceedings of the executive session, the public working session, or regular meeting. According to the minutes of that meeting, there is no formal vote approving this resolution to be added to the agenda. A minimum of five yes votes are required. There are none. This resolution, in my opinion, is invalid, has no merit, and should be rescinded. Also, as part of that policy, complex problems for the docket. The Board recommends that complex problems be placed on workshop meeting dockets. While exceptions are permitted, the Board prefers that complex subjects be discussed in workshop meetings prior to regular meetings to ensure that all appropriate persons have a reasonable opportunity to receive and contribute information for making wise and knowledgeable decisions. This also did not occur. This Board has once again, in my opinion, violated district policy. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, we don't applaud, or cheer, or boo, because the people are coming up here basically to give information, and if you would like to share some information, please be one of the speakers. Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Maureen Ryan speaking. Speaking with regards to Item 8.01. This represents what every trustee should be doing for this district, every last word of it. There is a duty of office to which you guys were voted in, and there's a responsibility that comes with that. This resolution reflects it. And I hope everybody took the time to read it, understand it, and thoroughly appreciate what it is for and what it stands for. It stands for our teachers and our students. This is what the district needs, this is what you should be working for, this is what you should be doing for the district, every last word of it. It needs to be passed. It needs to be passed. If it wasn't for this, some of the added Agenda Items, AIS and all that, would not need to be added. I hope that is considered, because the amounts of money that are going in, because of the reform, because of Common Core, it's just mind-boggling. And there's just no end in sight. You need to stand for the kids, the kids need higher standards, the kids need to be in the classroom learning. This reflects that. Please give it to the kids, they have to have it. Thank you.
Good evening. The proposal set before you has clear-cut resolutions that are both beneficial and sound for our schools and district as a whole. It imparts strength and devotion to true, all-encompassing education, eliminating the dictated, developmentally inappropriate Common Core standards. The proposal supports every teacher to effectively address each student based on their individual strengths and ability above and beyond state's measures and standardized test scores that are contrived and manipulated to enforce a student's failure, which bolsters only corporate prosperity rather than measure students' growth in learning. To continue in the vein of college and career-ready is pure folly, for what does a kindergartner know of college or a career? What current standards nurtures the five, six, or seven-year-old mind to develop normally? What stimuli are provided within their actual age groups to expand their minds with the inquisitiveness a young child naturally has instead of confusing them and beating their confidence down? To be able to start critically thinking in the later teen years is what nature built us to do. What is being done now is short-circuiting the frontal portion of the brain where critical thinking develops, forcing involuntary shutdown and damage when a young child is pressured above and beyond natural mental development, damaging the brain's ability to ever recover from this trauma. If this district continues to espouse and enforce the federal and state dictates on our schools, we will be rearing an entire generation of intellectually and emotionally damaged young adults. We will have allowed the undermining and destruction of every teacher's ability to grow young minds and eventually, at an alarming rate, lose them. This current environment is promoting much higher rates of school dropouts by killing the love for learning. This Board's narrow-mindedness and cronyism does nothing to acknowledge and address the destruction of true education that Common Core has designed to do. You are more dedicated to voting on contracts that benefit your family members, who are in the teaching profession, and protecting your own pensions, which I remind you is a conflict of interest, than you are in salvaging and enforcing a truly rich curriculum for this district to again be proud of. You are denying to provide sound education to all students, from the beginners to the special needs, and up and including high school graduates. You have all but taken away any chance of them rising to motivated, intellectual, educated levels on which people such as myself and all of you are at this moment in our lives. It is your obligation to our children, a chance, a full, well-rounded education is needed, far and above becoming test takers. Being a trustee does not grant manipulating your position for self-serving reasons or impose your preferences above doing what is beneficial for this district. At the end of your individual terms, you will share one common distinction: you will be ineffective has-beens.
Ladies and gentlemen, if there's continued applause, we may have to, and disruption, we may have to cut short the public comment period. So please, let's not get in that position, alright? So would everyone please restrain yourself? If you wish to speak, you may get on the line for speaking. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Nick Castellano, and I'm speaking in favor of 8.01, Approval of Community Resolution. We have a wonderful system where we have local control of education that's provided through locally-elected school boards. The school board is elected by the local community for a reason, and I assure you that that reason is not so that you can rubber stamp the policies that are passed down from the state or from the federal government. It's so that you can implement the policies that are most beneficial to your community and that are demanded by the parents in your community who are parenting the children that you are elected to educate. A lot of responsibility comes with that, and the responsibility here is quite clear, that when 40% of students are refusing these tests, that there are a lot of parents in this district that are very unhappy with what's going on with this testing and with this new methodology of giving something to children which is purporting to be an education, but which really falls short for a lot of students. So I think it's time for this Board to recognize that when parents are coming to these meetings and demanding a little bit of change, and demanding that something be done for our children so that we don't have to continue to opt out or refuse these ridiculous tests, that if there's an opportunity to send a message to Albany, if there's an opportunity to send a message even further up the chain through passage of a resolution like this, take the opportunity that's presented to you. I don't think there's really any alternative for this Board unless you want to abdicate your responsibility to your community but to have a yes vote on 8.01. Thank you.
Good evening, trustees, President Kellen, Superintendent Carrion. My name is Joe Torres. I'm here to speak about 8.1 from a different perspective. The figures we're hearing, that there's 40% who are refusing the test, the Common Core. May I ask that maybe the resolution and other information can be placed on a website in a language other than English, particularly Spanish? There's a whole segment of students and their parents were not being reached on the issues, and I think that 40% will probably grow even higher once they're aware of the issues. It's, you know, we have a school particularly in the Village of Wapageurs with a large contingent of Spanish-speaking students and parents, and I think we need to reach them as well as everyone else in the district. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Alright, then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. 4.02, Communications, Announcements Received by the Board of Education. Let's see, we started, I think, on your side last time, Mr. Lomia? Okay, Mrs. LaValle? Mr. Rubin?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I had the opportunity, is this on?
No.
It doesn't seem... Now you are.
I had the privilege of attending Orchard View Alternatives High School Career Day. There was a lot of attendance there, and it was a wonderful, there were everything from...
Sir Rubin?
Yes.
Louder, so that...
Use a different mic. Better?
Yes.
Okay. I had the privilege of attending Orchard View Career Day. It was a wonderful opportunity, it was very crowded, there were lots of people there, lots of businesses, and I just, I thought that was a great action on their part. Along with others on the Board, I also had the opportunity to attend, there were over two days, Myers Corners Character Education Day, and that, I thought it was just wonderful to see all those kids receiving the awards. With others also, I attended the Italian Honor Society induction at John J. High School. Those kids worked hard, and they deserve all the accolades. Why don't you just let the community know that there will be a blood drive this coming Thursday at Evans Elementary School between the hours of 4:00 and 8:30 p.m., and if I was eligible to donate blood, it's too soon for me, I would be there. And I would also like to congratulate, I saw this on Facebook today, note to the district, I'd like to congratulate the district, let me read this, "Congratulations to the WCSD for being recognized as one of 476 school districts in the nation as the best community for music education in the U.S. for 2016 by the NAMM, which is the National Association of Music Merchants, NAMM Foundation. This is a prestigious accolade from a nationwide nonprofit foundation. WCSD is demonstrating its commitment to innovation, to innovative learning opportunities for all children as outlined in the new Federal Every Student Succeeds Act, which lists music and the arts as recommended subjects as important for a well-rounded education for all students." So kudos to the music department, kudos to the fine arts department, this is at least the second year, I believe, that we've had, and it shows a lot on their part. Thank you.
Dr. Vesey?
Good evening, everyone. I attended the Policy Committee meeting, and we are doing the NISPA policy review with Dr. Bong and Ms. Pelton, the chairperson, she did the presentation on policy and procedures, and Ms. Karat and Ms. Ken was also there with us. That's all.
Mr. Lomia?
Well, Mr. Rubin mentioned probably all the things that I wanted to say, other than to say there were 36 students who were industed into the John J. Italian Honor Society, I thank all the teachers who made this event possible, also the character recognition at Myers, it was well-attended, extremely well-attended, I'd like to congratulate the students for being recognized for their character. I would like to, like Mr. Rubin, like to look at what happened at Orchard View, it was excellent. The students were exposed to many fields and opportunities students can pursue in their life. Last but not least, I would like to remind the community that the Wapageur Rotary, in conjunction with the Spring Valley Rotary and Long Island Barbecue Restaurant, will host a fundraiser event on March 31st. The fundraiser will begin at 11:00 a.m. for lunch, and culminate for dinner at 6:00 o'clock. Two Vietnam veterans, Howard Golden, co-founders, will step up raising money for such a worthy organization, long-comparable to make 10% of the proceeds. I sincerely hope that many of us attend that particular event for worthy cause. That's all I can say.
Mrs. Pelton? Mrs. Karat?
Yes, hi. I wanted to catch us up on something that we should have recognized maybe a month ago at one of our, probably the end of our February meeting. We have 14 sports teams that received, were recognized by the New York State Public High School Athletic Association as meeting the requirements for receiving the honor of Scholar-Athlete Team Award for the 2015-2016 Winter Sports Season. They are John J. and Royce Ketchum Boys Basketball, Boys and Girls Basketball, all four teams, the John J. Boys and Girls Bowling Teams, the Royce Ketchum and John J. Boys and Girls Indoor Track Teams, Wapageur's Boys Swimming, Wapageur's Gymnastics, John J. Cheerleading, and John J. Wrestling. And this is, this is quite a distinction. They, they have had to be aware of balancing the roles of a full-time student and a full-time athlete for several months, and it seems to have shown how much effort they put into their studies and their sports with the success of the teams and their grades. So I'd like to recognize those 14 teams for a job well done.
Mrs. Hardiman? I'd just like to say, I also attended the Character Education, Italian Honor Society, and at Character Education at Myers, Italian Honor Society at John J., and Career Fair at Orchard View. And I'd like to say that that, plus the mentions about our achievements, our students' achievements in music and in sports, shows that indeed we have a very well-rounded program here in Wapageurs, and this Board is completely committed to continuing a full, well-rounded education for all students, not a narrowly test-oriented approach. I was also at the Policy Committee meeting, which Mrs. Pelton organized brilliantly, and we had huge manual, and she organized it down to a very efficient agenda, and the Board will be proceeding with policy review. The last time the policy manual was updated was in 1994, and with the help of NISPA, we are, NISPA, we are working on bringing it all up to date in accordance with current law. Thank you. Yes, Mrs. LaValle?
I just wanted to mention how relieved and comforting, I assume we all are, with regard to the safety of our crew members who had a very serious incident. It seems it was handled very, very well by everybody, including the coach and the team themselves, and I'm just very happy that they're all safe and sound. And I'd like to thank everybody who was involved in protecting and keeping our students safe. Coach Hancock is a wonderful leader, my voice roll for him, and I'm sure that their training really helped to keep them all safe, and we're very glad that they are.
Thank you.
This is just a reminder?
Yes, Mr. Lomia?
Just a reminder, next Wednesday at 10:00, we're going to have a capital improvement committee meeting. I'm glad to pump it to that.
Oh, another reminder, on April 7, Thursday, is going to be the meeting at the Arlington High School with our Regent, our member of the New York State Board of Regents, Judith Johnson. And if anybody is interested in the New York State policy as it affects our schools, and you would like to attend, or if you would like to submit a question in advance, please, everyone is encouraged to attend. Thank you. Alright, next, Superintendent's Report, Spotlight on Program.
Good evening, Madam President, Board of Education, Community Administration, everyone, students especially. I thought this time I was always going to be able to say something. I purposely never repeat what one of the Board members have mentioned already, and Trustee LaValle. So, she did share what I was going to share, so thank you for sharing and bringing that up, and for everyone in the administration team, Dr. Bong, Dr. Card, well, everyone who really worked towards working with the entire recruiting field. Thank you for mentioning that. And my secretary will kill me if I don't share with everyone that next meeting is Monday, April 4th, will take place at Royce Ketchum Auditorium. This happens once a year sometimes where we have to move over to Royce Ketchum High School. That's where we will be meeting next week, April 4th, same time. Then I say this at every Board meeting, I'm always, always so extremely pleased to see the seniors coming to our meetings. I know you're here because you have to, and you have to get those signatures, but it does provide me an opportunity to just share with you how happy we are and proud of you that you are in this last chapter of your life when it comes to public education. We are approaching April real soon, so you have April, May, June, you have a lot of great things to look forward to. Please keep your eyes on the prize, stay focused, stay safe, and enjoy yourself immensely through this last chapter of your life. So I'm so proud of you, and I'm happy to see you here, even if you're here for those signatures. So thank you. Now, at this point, we're going to, I'm going to introduce Ms. James Aristano, Mr. Orick, I'm not sure if he's here, and one of the things we started this year is to highlight once a month our students in the district, so Ms. Aristano.
Thank you very much, except here's the problem. I tend not to speak with a microphone because I have a very, very large booming voice. So hopefully, everybody in the back can hear me? Yay! Okay, so, you know, it's really, really unique and wonderful to say about music programs and how music programs operate in school districts and what they do, and visual arts programs and what they do for students. It's very easy coming for me, I'm the advocacy chair for the New York State School Music Educators Association, I can spew the data like there's no tomorrow, but it's best to hear it from students, because students can really tell you what's going on. So without any further ado, and there will be a little bit of a presentation from that, I'd like to introduce to you two of our wonderful students, Malcolm and Rose Caligay.
Alright, so I'm Rose, and we have a Tuesday that we have by memory because we happen to learn it by ear. This is called screening meeting, and we'll talk a little bit more after. And we'll talk a little bit more after.
Thank you all very much. So Rose and I, as twins, we've been, we're a product of the eight, eight very successful years in our school's excellent music program that has introduced us to the classical training that allows us to make this wonderful music on our instruments. And it allows us to have many opportunities to, to be so well-educated that we're able to go out, it prepares us to go out and we're able to play in these regional ensembles that play at the state level, where they take the best musicians in the state. And every year our school is represented, about four or five people each year are able to go. And that's incredible.
I was going to say that our eight years in this incredible music program have prepared us in areas beyond music. It's incredibly important for things like public speaking.
Confidence.
Confidence. Knowing how to practice is something so integral to knowing how to study. It's, it's the same thing. It's studying music versus studying in the classroom. It's all knowing how to, how to retain information and stuff. And that branches out to all subjects, not just music.
Research shows that the activities involved in music train your brain to retain information and seek out what's important within that information. So people might hear and absorb everything, but a musician will be able to find what's important, like, much like the melody, but they'll find the main points that they can use in their notes and in the classroom.
Which helps them excel in all, every other subject.
You see scholars in our school in the top ten percent, many of them are involved in some capacity. Orchestral playing, chorus, everything. And everyone's welcome to, it's a great opportunity because everyone's welcome to be a part of it. And it really enriches the environment there and it enriches the community. People can bring their music out into the community.
Yeah, and really just we have so much to thank the Wapachir's Music Program for.
Our teacher, Mr. Orrick specifically, as a director.
So we thank you for listening to us.
May I, may I just say one thing?
Yes, Mr. Rubin.
Thank you again. This was, this was just a terrific, terrific performance, in my opinion, and apparently of many others. And this is, I think you folks, you are great examples of why this district this year received the NAMM Award. And when I did the math, there are thirteen thousand five hundred and six, just so you know, thirteen thousand five hundred and six district, school districts across New York State. And because of the work of folks like you, we are part of that seven point four percent that received this award. Thank you.
All right, so we actually have these, it's here to present to you guys. Oh, they're specific. This is for Peggy Cullen.
We rehearsed this, though. Have you been hard of them?
Karen Carruth.
Alcima Rizby.
And Laval.
Robert Rubin.
John Lumia.
Mrs. Soma?
And Tracy Powell.
Thank you so much.
Ms. Crandall?
It's White Phong.
Darren Locust.
Michelle Cardo.
Richard Zip.
And we also have these wonderful buttons for the Music in Our Schools Month. And we thank you all for supporting music in our schools.
As Rose and Malcolm finish up, it is, it is an absolute honor to be able to be in Wapachir Central School District at this point in my career. The music program, the art program, and I like my own language department have all welcomed me. And the board has welcomed me and central administration and all of the building principals. But what's unique about what you just saw is that those, the students who are involved and engaged in the arts, they have the capacity to memorize, compose, to do all types of aspects of what are those things that are college and/or career-ready and the things that businesses are so much looking for. These students represent a number of students that we have. But it's not just about the students who are looking to go into music. It's about what the arts teach to students on a regular basis. This is Music in Our Schools Month. March is Music in Our Schools Month. And it's also Youth Artist Month, which is basically Arts in Our Schools Month. So while we're doing that, I'd like to just give invitations out to the board that I've been asked to give you for our youth in the Arts Month. We have a show at John Jay that's coming up. So I have invitations for you to pass to the board. So I will present those to you. And lastly, to just say that the Music in Our Schools Month, there's, there's two phrases that are coming down. One is from the National Association for Music Education, and that's "music inspires." And obviously by somebody standing up and saying, "May I," for the students and clapping, "music inspires." These students touched youth there in a way, and many people in this audience tonight in a very special way. Music does inspire. And then for the state slogan for the New York State School Music Association, our motto for this month is "Music: Success for All." This is a prime example, and we thank you for your continued support.
Little clarification for those who might have been confused. It is permissible to applaud for performances and presenting awards. It's not permissible to applaud or boo or cheer for opinions because we want all opinions to be listened to and respected, no matter how few or how many people are who are here supporting them. Thank you. Six point zero one additions to the proposed two hundred six, two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen budget.
At our last, at our last Board of Education meeting two weeks ago, we encouraged the Board of Education to provide any input in terms of the first draft of the superintendent's recommended budget. As you know, next week, when we meet at RCK, we will continue with this conversation. One of the things we talked about at the last meeting, we discussed the fact that the gap elimination adjustment going away and possibly looking at some state education, state aid foundation increase. With those two things in mind, and as we continue to try to balance a budget, we also discussed really ensuring that we utilize our funds responsibly and trying to create a balance of the things we need as well as making sure that we create, we also bring in things that are seed money that can be long-lasting. For example, math manipulatives in the elementary grade levels is something that would be considered seed money because it would be something that's long-lasting. And if we don't have money to sustain more types of supplies for our students, it's something that we were able to get with a one-shot deal. So that's basically kind of referring to seed money in a nutshell. In addition to that, in order to continue to gather the data, we, since last school year, we do utilize the clickers. And it does provide us with the actual data and information necessary for us to continue to proceed forward. So this is a very short activity so that we can continue to draft and we can continue to meet the requests of the Board of Education and the community. For example, I just want to share that Ms. Crandall and I went back and we really looked at the cross-country for our, our modified cross-country for our middle schools. And you will not see it right now as additional possibilities. We were able to look and as we utilized that word shade, we were able to shave money in certain areas and actually make it a part of the superintendent's recommended budget. Big difference, folks, and let's just continue to remember that. It's typically called the superintendent's recommended budget. But if you really want to look at it from another perspective, what we're talking about is the draft that's in progress to create and balance a budget that's responsible and that meets the needs for all of our students, providing opportunities and options for them. So as we move forward, Ms. Crandall, do you have anything to add to what I just indicated? Absolutely.
So in the coming weeks, we anticipate having this New York State budget finalized. That's our hope. Because not only will it help us to make a decision and have a good discussion for next week at April fourth at RCK, we will also be able to have a discussion with regards to the contingency budget, which is not something that we necessarily enjoy. And I harped on it again today about the contingency budget and my concerns and where we stand. So this potential addition of state aid is very important as we look forward, not only for our budget, for the sixteen-seventeen operations, but also with regard to the contingency. So what we have here is a very quick exercise. There's approximately twenty items, which were provided to the Board of Education with narratives. They total about three million dollars. And we're asking that you would rate these on level of priority to, from lowest priority to highest priority. And we will take that data back and work on it as we get more information from the state.
If you need explanation for any of these items, please feel free to do so. If you need some assistance with the clickers, please raise your hand and teaching assistant.
So on, so on the clickers, real quick, everything's, everyone should be in test mode. You'll see questions one, you'll see question one and a, and a little cursive with a little carrot. The carrot is where the cursor is. And you're going to use A, B, C, D, and E and F to choose your answer choice. Answer A is, it associates to number one, that's the lowest priority in your mind or, you know, in your opinion for this particular topic. And five is the highest, three is kind of a no opinion in the middle. And then, so you'll hit the, you'll hit your answer choice and then you're going to hit the, the white enter button in the middle of the, at the top of the remote.
We're doing A, B, C, D, or E?
Yeah, which, correct. And then we'll wait for the next question.
Okay, so our first question is math manipulatives in the elementary education classroom. If you need any quick explanation, well, we'll provide it anyway. Math manipulatives, we're really talking about supplies that are aligned to our textbook, Math in Focus. In addition to that, teachers utilize what, what we refer to as manipulatives, which are hands-on items that are equivalent to, to math numbers so that students can have a better understanding and grasp. Many teachers sometimes buy their own manipulatives as well as the manipulatives that we do have in some of our classrooms are prior to even our new Math in Focus series. So this is our first item in terms of addition. And A as a low priority and E as a highest priority.
Dr. Rizby? All right, Mr. Soma's not here, so we're going to start. Next?
At our last presentation, we also indicated in terms of textbooks, the original request. We were, to balance the budget, we did not utilize the entire request from the Curriculum and Instruction Department. One of the ways we tried to decrease the textbooks was by, actually, we said that we are looking to, we are looking to put into every single classroom, classroom libraries. As it stands right now, many of our teachers even buy their own books for their classroom libraries. If we can do this, then we will be able to increase some of our materials in terms of textbooks in K through six. And although I use the word "seed," when I provided you with your weekly memo review as well, we called it "sustainable." So this is once again an item that's sustainable, new and sustainable. As we can, yes, sure?
I, I apologize because I very, was very late in submitting a question. But I was, I'm not quite sure what progress monitoring tool means. And I asked Dr. Cardo, but I wasn't quite sure.
Progress monitoring tool is what we're required to do, which is to ensure to see how our students are growing. So that sometimes it's referred to as formative assessments or right now... or, right now with our progress monitoring tool, we would be talking about Dr. Cardwell Foundations, or?
Fontis and Penellas.
Fontis and Penellas. But basically, it's a way for teachers to utilize and provide formative assessments, monitor the growth of students.
Is this part of the APPR?
No, it's not part of the APPR. I mean, good instruction, you provide progress monitoring, it's always been in existence, so whether we're looking at whatever standard or, well, curriculum's different to standards, but.
Technology-driven?
It doesn't have to be technology-driven. Our, for the most part, no, this one won't be technology-driven. But now we segue into technology integration teacher. This is, Mr. Lokeem is here, and at the same time, this is one area where, once we started facing the fiscal crisis, as many schools did, or all schools did throughout New York State, we actually said goodbye to about four teachers in the, at Technology Department that serve as embedded professional developers for our schools, so they do work with the teachers and they work with the students, and they also work with the teaching assistants in our schools. Basically, right now, we work, we have Mr. Rubio and Mr. Roberto. There are two, there are only two technology integration teachers in the district for over 11,000 students.
This is question number four.
We heard about, we heard some of our community members who spoke for high school intramurals, which is different from modified sports. Last, this school year, we were able to implement intramurals in our elementary schools. What I'd like to share, though, that it is a fact and a concern that with high school intramurals, with all of the activity that we already have going with all of our formal teams in our schools, that space is extremely limited to be able to also have high school intramurals, which I think it's a great thing. Not every student makes it to, into an official team, but we have to be responsible in sharing that aspect as well, that it's a concern for both Royce Ketchum High School and John Jay High School. And I see my colleagues that are the administrators in those buildings nodding their head. Yes, this is true. Marching band. Marching band is something that the district had, and if we were to look at a marching band right now, it would be a district-wide marching band, shared by Royce Ketchum and John Jay High School, students working together. This is an expense, this expense includes the first year, the implementation of the first year, of being a first-year program. It's inclusive of special instruments required for use in marching band, and repair, maintenance, cost, uniform transportation, additional supplies, personnel, so we weren't excluding any type of expenses when we were mentioning marching bands as well. We've also heard, some of our community members went, talking about providing additional assistance and supports, as well as enrichment. Technically speaking, this would be new for the district to provide elementary summer school. So if we look at elementary summer school, we would be talking a half million dollars. And it would be a project-based, very interactive, summer school, so that students would feel like, oh, I want to go back again tomorrow. As we indicated in the 2015-16 school, 2015-16 proposed budget, we started adding an additional $30,000. I shared very candidly with the board that I think it is our responsibility as a school district to continue to maintain our buildings, our infrastructure, outside equipment, and that it's for parents, and I'll stick to this, to help enhance whatever it is that we have. We do have a responsibility to make sure that we provide the fundamentals and we make sure that we maintain this equipment. So in thinking of how last year, we added an additional $30,000, and in this present proposed budget, we have $30,000, we did the math to add it all up for the remaining seven schools, and throwing it in there as $223,000 for outside equipment. Academic field trips, that was another thing that the board, prior to my tenure here, had to say goodbye to due to really having to work hard to balance a budget. We have not been able to support local academic field trips. This would primarily help for, I see some of my coordinators sitting out there who come in bugging sometimes because they want money to take, have one of our classes or a special program, go on a local field trip, let's just say even to the Franklin, FDR, Franklin Delano Roosevelt Museum. And so this would be, bring back what was once in a budget to provide students the opportunity to, to help them financially with academic field trips. As you can see, this is prorated as well, and it was done per pupil for each school. Once again, at a certain point, the district had to say goodbye to more of the extracurricular activities that existed for students after school. This is just really bringing back the allocation for certain stipends in terms of then providing the secondary schools the opportunity to see where there is a demand for certain programs that they may, they may not have anymore in the school district.
Does this include the school clubs?
Yes, I would say, for example, like, if there's a debate team, and the debate team was no longer in existence, and there's a stipend for that and a need for that, it would be something that the administration would look at and consider bringing back. Okay, elementary assistant principals. And when we look at many of the demands in our schools and the things that we're looking at, we're not looking to provide full-time principals or even create 12-month positions, but to have shared principals. And for our larger elementary schools, one of the things that, and I think, thinking realistically, when you have 10 elementary schools, you may see it more so than in other school districts, is that we do have some schools that range in the 300 enrollment number, approximately 300, but typically, most schools run with, I would say, 500 or 600 students. That's like the ideal number in terms of an elementary school, and many times, they do have additional assistance in some of these schools, whether it's a teacher on a special assignment or some type of part-time assistance with administration. As we indicated before, and I think if you spoke to teachers, they can really tell you about how beneficial they find the embedded professional development that exists with our ELA and math professional developers. We actually use the word professional developers, in many districts, they utilize the word coach. Do understand, and so many schools, if you look at schools that can sustain ELA and math professional developers, or many times, you may give the term coach, some schools have their own individual coach. We have one ELA coach, math professional, and one math, one ELA professional developer, and one math professional developer. And if you haven't had the opportunity to see the work that they do, hands-on with the teachers and the students, it's really great work.
Is my question, you're showing sessions for then elementary schools, what about the middle school? You're not being, just.
We do get them into the, the middle schools, it's just a bit more difficult because they have to be certified, so it's just a certain amount of time, but they don't typically come in to the magnitude that they're on into the, at the elementary level, but I think that we will be able to work something out with this. So thanks for bringing that up. This was discussed at the capital committee to upgrade Royce Ketchum and John Jay cafeterias. We're not talking renovations, we're talking really giving it a nice facelift. As you can see with this present capital improvement project and all the work that Don Ross and his team and contractors have done, John Jay looks spectacular from the outside, and even when you walk into their lobby, but there's still a lot of work to be done in both our high school cafeterias, really giving it a nice facelift and giving, making the students feel really good about coming into their cafeteria. The Fuel Master Diagnostic Tool, we provided you with that explanation, and this program allows for the district to be analyzed for vehicle maintenance purposes when utilizing this added tool. One of the things, I can't speak much about it because it's not really, I could talk to you about curriculum all day, but in terms of, it would really help with the vehicles for facilities and operation, as well as for the transportation department for our students, to reduce the number of breakdowns that we typically have, and many other school districts have, because they don't have this diagnostic tool. I feel like I'm at an auction all those.
Is there cost savings because of this, and in what ways?
Yes, and the way that we would be able to assess our vehicles and really provide better maintenance without having to experience more breakdowns. So it's really taking much more of a proactive approach to maintaining, to better maintain what we have.
Is there a timeframe in which it would pay for itself? Estimated what, what, five years, 10 years?
It could, it won't take that long. Every time a bus breaks down, if we can't drive it, we have to pay for a tow, and that is, and it's an expensive process. So yes, just based on the tow contractual line that we have, contractual expenditures, we spend pretty near $20,000 a year towing these vehicles. So again, in addition to staff time, overtime, additional staff having to run out, it would pay for itself.
So our before and after-school elementary tutorial program as well, I think the word "tutorial" is, excuse me?
It's up here.
Yes, it is.
It's not on our sheets, but.
Yes, on your sheet as well.
Yeah.
Really?
It's on some and not on others.
It's the total, the dollars are off, the explanation is there.
Tutorial is probably maybe the wrong word, because at the same time, what we're really looking to is provide our low and high achievers, as well as our students with disabilities, and our English, as the second language learners, or the new terminology, English is new learners, ENL students. So it will provide everyone an opportunity to participate and be able to stay after school in terms of meeting the needs for all of our students.
This, again, I have a question. Why are focuses only on elementary? What about the honors program?
Well, one of the things, that's a great question. Our focus is at the high school level, I think, what, what do you mean?
Just the elementary school.
No, no, I know, but what I was going to share is that one of the things we're really extremely fortunate about, and we have been able to sustain and maintain many of our enrichment programs for our students. As you can see, where they lost more opportunity was at the extracurricular aspect, which we brought back some money. We looked at the high school intramurals, we also talked about. And last year, we actually, we actually, from what I remember, we established four additional high school positions in our district. What we do too is that when, for example, this school year, there were courses that were accepted by the Board of Education, we not only look to accept those courses or bring them to you for recommendation for acceptance, but we want to also make sure that we do have sufficient teachers in our schools to be able to provide them. The high school programs are much more formalized in aspect in terms of, you have periods one through nine, and we, we didn't really lose a lot of opportunities and options. For example, if we needed to bring back more AP courses, I couldn't tell you right now, I don't have that data information. Let's just say, we provided six types of different mathematics AP courses, and there was a need for that. I see some of my coordinators and our building-level administrators, they would not hesitate to put it down as part of their request. So right now, it doesn't seem that we're looking into that area, but because you asked the question, it's a question that we will continue to have tomorrow and see if there is a demand for additional types of, let's say, math AP courses or science AP courses as well, but we are not depriving our high school students from those opportunities.
Especially what I think is that, especially what I think is that in the high school, the kids or students who are in the honors class, sometimes they're in a desperate need to get some extra help, and that will be good for high school also.
That's a very good point. And by the way, that's part of the work that we're doing, really trying to look at how we're going to really fully implement our advisories so that we can provide all of those type of opportunities as well. Teaching assistance for our computer labs, once again, the technology department was one of the departments that took a very hard hit when the district was forced, like many other, most districts, to really balance a school budget. So bringing back computer labs would really help, teaching assistance for computer labs would really help in ensuring that they're not as, what we call, shared positions as we have them now and throughout the district. Yes, monitors for increased supervision. This is my third year in the district, and every time I visit schools, I always hear from my colleagues, my colleagues, the monitors when I walk in, and they always remind me about how many monitors existed and how there's always a need for safety in our schools. And that was another, that was another big hit the district faced. I remember it was one of the first things Dr. Shucat told me when I came to the district, and even Dr. Boggs nodding his head, and it was my first year, three years ago, and they indicated how that was really a big hit, and the monitors will share that with you Yes, John Jay High School, right now, Royce Ketchum has air conditioning in their cafeteria. John Jay High School does not have air conditioning in the cafeteria. I don't want to start a war, but this is one of those items that could be new, and then, for the most part, sustainable. But this is one of those items that could be new and then for the most part sustainable. Cameras to outfit all school vehicles in terms for transporting students. I can tell you right now, cameras are a gift when you are facing some real issues and you have to get to the root of the cause. So if we are able to actually have cameras for all of our vehicles, that would be something to consider as well.
How many do we have? What are we outfitting now?
We currently have, this request is for, what do you say? Can I read that? There were twenty-eight vehicles that have nothing. There are thirty-four or thirty-two, and I may have these numbers a little off, that have an older system, which sometimes works and sometimes doesn't. It's kind of silent weakness. This request would put, every new vehicle we get also has cameras on them. So for the last several years, every new vehicle has included a camera. But this request would put new cameras on the buses that have the older systems or no systems at all.
Excuse me, how often are the buses replaced? So, you know, another. Okay, so then this would be a long time before they were replaced with cameras? With ones with cameras?
Approximately, how many incidents do we have per month on a bus?
Per month on a bus? I would say, I mean, you could ask any building level principal, but I would say easily ten, fifteen, twenty a month. And then critical situations, those cameras have come in incredibly.
And incidents range. It's from, you know, name calling to getting out of your seat. But what I'm saying is that when you hear the word incidents and we mentioned, there are many things that do occur on the bus from that all the way to something more brave.
And it's not only students, it's also can be related to disciplinary issues with regard to staff.
Are we prioritizing the buses with cameras on those routes where we typically have more problems? I realize it probably varies from year to year. Okay, thank you.
Our last one, maker spaces. This is something that's becoming really much more popular in a lot of our, in many schools. And Dr. Rizvi here, we're talking about our secondary schools. So this would be for our high schools and really providing that twenty-first century opportunity for students to be able to work. Right now, we have sort of a, I don't want to use the word mock, but in a simulation that we're really trying to, at Van Wyck Junior High School, that we were able to basically start toward step road and continue to work through that. So maker spaces would be at our secondary schools. This is the last item. No, it's not a study hall. No, it's not a study hall. It really provides the students the opportunity to innovatively learn and somewhat of a project-based approach as well. The one thing that I'd like to share as well is that the information that you, we received, that you received and what you see on the screen, it's a true combination of what we heard from our community members who came to the microphone as well as some of your recommendations and as well as district office administration and building level administration of what it is that will, that what we call a wish list. So these items come from an array of people that represent the Wapins, the Wapins District community. So what we'd like to do now with this information is that if you have more input or if you have more input, you'd like to share more information or you have any concerns regarding of these items, let us know as soon as possible so that when we create our second draft, which is typically traditionally called a superintendent's recommended budget, it will definitely be reflected. And for the community as well, we continue to make sure that any questions we receive, that we post them on the website. And we actually take those recommendations. As you can see, many of those recommendations have come from emails as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions from the board? The next item is the consent agenda. Is there any item that anyone wants to pull from the consent agenda?
Consent agenda resolution resolved that the Board of Education does hereby approve the following consent agenda items as stated, seven point oh one, seven point oh three, I'm sorry, I'll start that again, as stated, seven point oh two, seven point oh three, seven point oh four, seven point oh five, seven point oh six, seven point oh seven, seven point oh eight, seven point oh nine, seven point one zero, and seven point one one.
Mr. Rubin moved, second. Mr. Lumi is second. All those in favor? Unanimous. Eight point zero one, approval of community resolution. Do we have a motion?
All right.
Whereas the purpose of education is not solely to prepare students for college and career success, but to educate consistent with the principles of individual liberty and responsibility as outlined in our national constitution, a populace of knowledgeable, informed, and independent-minded citizens. And whereas current federal and state education policy, legislation, and regulations significantly inhibit appropriate local autonomy and representation in education policy development processes. And whereas our nation's school systems have been spending growing amounts of time, money, and energy on high-stakes standardized testing, in which test scores are used to make major decisions affecting individual students, educators, and schools. And whereas the over-reliance on high-stakes standardized testing, the state and federal accountability systems is undermining educational quality and equity by hampering educators' efforts to focus on the broad range of learning experiences to promote innovation, creativity, problem-solving, communication, critical thinking, and deep subject matter knowledge. And whereas the overemphasis on standardized testing has caused considerable collateral damage in too many schools, including narrowing the curriculum, teaching to the test, reducing love of learning, pushing students out of school, driving excellent teachers out of the profession, and undermining school climate. And whereas the commitment of substantial resources to testing diverts those same resources from legitimate educational needs of students, including the arts, music, other non-tested subjects, the challenges of special needs students, and English language learners, practical and workplace skills, project-based authentic learning opportunities, attention to contemporary, domestic, and global social, political, and governmental concerns, and deep exploration of subject matters. Therefore, be it resolved that the Wapins Central School District will emphasize district measures of teacher effectiveness over state measures and standardized test scores to the degree allowed by law. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District will emphasize district measures of authentic student progress and engagement over state measures and standardized test scores, and will not use state assessment scores beyond what state and federal law requires. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District will evaluate the Common Core curriculum standards to determine which are not developmentally appropriate and which do not foster authentic critical thinking and the concepts of individual liberties and responsibilities as previously detailed and necessary for truly collaborative decision-making and policy development for our students, and minimize their impact on teaching and learning. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District will emphasize a curriculum rich in all areas of education, including but not limited to music, art, science, social studies, civics, and foreign languages, and will actively work to prevent a narrowing of our educational standards to match those of the Common Core. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District will align all student, teacher, and classroom schedules to core values as developed in consideration of local community concerns and adherent to representative governmental policies and procedures. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District Board of Education calls on Governor Andrew Cuomo, Commissioner Mary Ellen Aliyah, the state legislature, and the Board of Regents to reexamine public school accountability systems in New York State and to develop a system which utilizes multiple local developed measures and does not require extensive standardized testing, more accurately reflects the broad range of student learning, and is used to support students and improve schools. And be it further resolved that the Wapins Central School District Board of Education calls on President Barack Obama, Secretary of Education John King, and the United States Congress to overhaul the Elementary and Secondary Education Act, Every Student Succeeds Act, eliminate testing mandates, promote multiple forms of evidence of student learning, and school quality and accountability systems, and not mandate any fixed rule for the use of student test scores in evaluating educators. And be it finally resolved that the Wapins Central School District Board of Education shall promulgate any necessary policies, procedures, and guidelines to implement this resolution.
Do we have a motion? Mrs. Laval, do we have a second? Mrs. Karath, discussion? Mrs. Laval.
For the most part, the resolution speaks for itself. I introduced it because really this educational reform was implemented without the appropriate public discourse that it warranted and that the community deserves. And this resolution is intended to recognize the concerns of the community and requests the appropriate dialogue and discussion and attention and input from the community. It's very consistent with what we've heard in terms of public comment, what we've seen in terms of forty percent of the district students being opted out of the assessments. We're making budget decisions constantly in response to the reform, and yet we're not discussing the reform itself. The community wants this discussion. They came, they spoke, they speak consistently. They're asking that the concerns be acknowledged and discussed and responded to. And that's the purpose of the resolution, and I hope the board will recognize that and adopt it and send the message to our legislators, to our legislators and elected representatives. This board is continually making comments that, you know, there's limits as to what we can do locally as a board. There shouldn't be, we're locally elected officials, and we should be able to make the decisions appropriate for our students. And we shouldn't have to say we can't do this or we have to do that because we're being mandated. And so this is our opportunity to do what this board consistently says needs to be done, express in a powerful way to our elected representatives that we want to be able to make the decisions that we know are appropriate for our students, our taxpayers, our community. And I hope the board will adopt the resolution and make the statement that they say they want to make.
Dr. Rizvi.
I review the resolution, this eight point oh one, saying that the purpose of high school education is not to prepare them for college and career is like saying that the purpose of teaching sixth-grade students is not to prepare them for the seventh grade. About fifty years ago, a high school diploma was sufficient to get a job, but today it has been replaced by at least four-years degree. And the statement here that we should not use the test score beyond that state and federal law allows, and many other statements in this resolution are oxymoron. Nobody is doing anything beyond what the law permits. We are not using tests for any other purpose, at least not in the Wapins. Our children are the future of our country. We must prepare them for the competitive world. United States and our children have to compete with students in other parts of the world. In this global economy, we cannot close our doors to the outside world. We must face the reality. All international tests over and over have shown that our students are lagging behind. Changes are being made rapidly in the state education department. APR is on hold. The new commissioner of education is getting complete teacher involvement in curriculum and instruction. This is already being done. And it is redundant to pass a resolution for something that is already being done. Popeter has always promoted music, arts, science, social studies, and foreign language and other activities, even in the most difficulties. And are we not teaching all these subjects right now in our district? Subjects mentioned in this resolution, am I missing something? In addition, we are the only district teaching the highest level of courses like multiple variable calculus and advanced statistics. There is no need to reinvent the wheel. What is the point of this resolution if all this already being done? Thank you.
Mrs. Hardeman.
There's much in this resolution with which I agree. However, I agree with Dr. Rizvi that in most part it is unnecessary and superfluous. The implication of the resolution is that these things are not being done by our teachers currently in Wapins Central School District, and it is really an affront to them as professionals. As one community member pointed out, our mission states our focus. And as was often mentioned throughout the meeting tonight, we have many opportunities for students to become well-rounded and to explore many avenues in their learning. We have the Italian Honor Society was mentioned, math manipulatives. We were recognized nationally for our music instruction, the collaborative work that goes on in maker spaces, scholar-athletes recognized by New York State, just to name a few that were mentioned this evening. The, there are many changes going on. The policy is changing. There's been much work with Albany and our representatives there from those at every level here to move those changes forward. No longer are the scores being used to evaluate teachers. The new commissioner, Aliyah, and the new leader for the Board of Regents, Rosa, are moving the focus off of standardized testing. With all of those points, I think that it's clear that this, as I said at my opening, this resolution is not necessary.
Mrs. Karath.
I'm wondering if it would be possible for us to take some time on this. It is of, this in no way detracts from the efforts that you have put into drafting this at all, any of my comments. But it is, this concerns all of us. We may not have gotten involved to the extent that you have, and I have a lot of respect for your passion and commitment for this. But we need to talk about how it's affected Wapins Central School District. I think this is a great first start. The whereas are broad sweeping statements. I only want to ask for each one, we don't have time to go into it tonight. But I would rather ask for each whereas, how, what are we seeing in our district? What has happened? What are our statistics for each? If we're going to make sweeping statements like this, we have to bring it home and we have to show where it has made an impact on the district specifically. And then I would echo some of our other trustees that we don't need to put, be it resolved for things that are already taking place or for mindsets that the administration and the faculty or the teaching population have already made it clear. For instance, and I may be, I may be in error on this. For instance, and I may be, I may be in error on this, but I was under the impression that that we, the district already emphasizes measures of teacher effectiveness over state measures and standardized test scores to the degree allowed by law. That was one that I think was specific we're doing. And yes, it's good to continue to reinforce it. But instead of, instead of using those resolves to send a message to Albany about how we want to be involved in the continuing review and the continuing amendments to how we're going to implement new standards for math and English and standardized testing in general. So that resolved, I can, I can give you this afterwards as far as the ones that I feel that it's taking place. In general, this, this is, it's a huge resolution, and it kind of clicked back to last year for me. I think we need to send a message by showing that we are right on top of where they are right now with, in Albany, with making changes and what is this and how can we get more involved in the timeline for the new learning standards and really make our words count in that way. Thank you.
Mrs. Laval.
First of all, I'd like to thank my board members for agreeing to engage in this discussion. It's been a long time coming for the feedback and concerns and consideration which are given to the resolution. A few comments I'd like to make in response. This in no way, these whereas statements is, are in no way an indictment of anything or anyone in this district. This is my concern for the design of the reform. I'm not suggesting that this district or any teacher or particular school has abandoned their commitment to the broad education of our students. But in my extensive research and analysis of the reform itself, it is by its very design going to narrow the education for our students. It's going to mandate certain aspects of education that is going to continue to exhaust our budget, and we're going to constantly be looking and having to cut the amazing programs that we do have in place. The way the reform is rolled out, it is called, it's called Common Core. That means they want all of our students doing the same thing at the same time. That's the intended rollout. So they are looking to push the higher level math courses out. Because when every student has to take algebra in the 10th grade, there's not going to be any place for calculus. That's the design of the program. And when you listen to the developers themselves, Jason Zimba, and the Validation Committee members, Sandra Stotsky, this is what you see. This is what you hear. When you look at the documents, at the, at the program and the way it's structured, these programs will be narrowed. And again, this is in no way, you know, a judgment or an indictment of what's happening right now or the intentions of the district. But it's a very serious concern. That's the way it's designed. As for, as for waiting for Albany to decide that they're going to respond to our concerns, that's not the structure of our government. We need to tell, we shouldn't be, you know, begging for the scraps from Albany with regard to the changes that we want. We should be looking at what the concerns are from our community members, what our concerns are in looking at the structure and the documents themselves, and we should be advocating and on behalf of our electorate, the people who elected us. We should be going to Albany and telling them what we want, not waiting for them to respond where they feel it's appropriate, when we, when we obviously have passion here in terms of the concerns. So where these decisions are being made is very, very significant concern. And I know, I don't think it's okay for us to wait for Albany to tell us what they're willing to do in response to these concerns. I think we need to be proactive on behalf of our community and our students and our electorate. With regard to looking at this from the perspective of, you know, what's really happening here in Wappingers, that turns our students into test subjects. It turns them into experiment subjects. We'll wait and see what happens, and what if we find out it's bad? They don't have time to waste. We can't take their time here for granted. We need to be proactive and look at the design of the program that we're implementing and the decisions that we're making, and we need to look at the testimony of experts, the experts who were asked to, to express their perspective at the national level when this was implemented, and they're warning us. Five hundred early childhood development specialists signed a letter and hand-delivered it to the Validation Committee members and the development, the developers of this program and said, this is dangerous for our children. And so, so I don't think it's okay for us to experiment with our children. I think we need to look at these urgent warnings that have been issued and the statements from the developers themselves. Jason Zimba said, this, this program is only designed to prepare our students for two-year state school. We're not, it's not designed to prepare our students for competitive four-year colleges. He said that. He developed it, and he said it. We have to take those statements seriously. We have to take them at their word, especially when he's the person who thinks we should be doing this. When the person who brings it to us tells us it's not what we want for our children, I think we should believe them. So again, I think it's important that we recognize that the, we are answerable to our electorate, that our community in all, in virtually all of the comments that we've heard, except for, you know, an occasional dissent, the vast, vast majority of comments that we've received have been that the community wants a voice locally in what decisions are being made that are affecting our children. These children are for real. They're real-life human beings, and they don't get this time back. And it's long past time for us to have this discussion. So if you want to say that there's so much in here that we want to take a little time and look at it and continue this discussion, I'm delighted to do that. But we need to say, this is meaningful, and it is urgent, and we need to do what we say we're going to do if we're going to, if we say we're going to, you know, pay mind to what this is about. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other comments? Mrs. Carruth.
What's the procedure for tabling, for further discussion?
You make a motion to table.
Are we done with discussion?
Does anyone have anything else to say at this time?
And what's the procedure for us to collaborate on a draft?
That you could recommend it to a committee.
Can we create an ad hoc committee?
Yes, we could create a committee to look at it. Yeah, thank you. Good point of order.
I move that we create an ad hoc committee to look at the draft further and to gain further consensus on how we want to word a resolution of this nature.
Mrs. Pedro, do we have to table it first or is creating the committee?
I think creating the committee and then you should set a time on it or when that we brought that.
Okay, we don't have to table it first as a separate motion. Okay, thank you. All right, thanks. She's our expert. All right, do we have a second to that motion? Mrs. Hardiman? Okay, did, what did we have to set a time on that motion? A time for, to get sent it?
Well, we'll look here.
Okay, we could vote on it and then set a time. All right, fine. All those in favor of creating an ad hoc committee to look at this?
Not, 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 not.
Okay, Mrs. Laval, Mrs. Carruth, and Mrs. Hardiman. Those opposed? Mr. Lumia? Excuse me. No calling out, please. Those opposed, please raise your hands. Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Pelton, Mr. Rubin, Mrs., Dr. Rizvi, and Mrs. Kelland. All right, excuse me. Then I think we still have an original motion to vote on whether you want to adopt the resolution or amend it or anything else or table it.
Point of order, you could now have had that second motion with there was an original motion on it too.
Yeah, that's what, kind of what I thought that you had to table it to create the committee.
Therefore, that second motion is invalid.
All right, fine. Okay, Mrs. Pedro, could you check that out? She's our parliamentarian. Okay, yeah. Okay, I think we're back to the original motion, that it must be either voted on, amended, tabled, or something like that. The suggestion to set up a committee on it, apparently there's some question whether that was valid before we did the other things. So do I have, are we just sticking with the original motion, or did someone want to make a motion to table it?
Can I amend the motion to create an ad hoc committee to tabling the resolution?
Or just a separate motion?
Separate motion, yeah.
Oh, okay. I just moved to table the resolution.
Okay. Do we have a second to tabling the motion? No second. So I guess we go back to the original motion. Did anyone make any other motions, amending or anything? Okay, then we're voting on the original motion, which is the resolution. All those in favor of the resolution? Mrs. Laval? All those opposed? Mr. Lumia, Mrs. Pelton, Mrs. Carruth, Mrs. Hardiman, Mr. Rubin, Ms. Dr. Rizvi, and Mrs. Kelland. We can call out, please.
I don't care about that. You have taken everything that has come into children, get off next to the children.
Excuse me.
You table the resolution without further discussion.
Excuse me.
Completely ridiculous.
Excuse me.
There is no.
Excuse me.
No excuse.
Excuse me.
I think you should.
Excuse me.
Not on a board.
Excuse me. There were rule, there are rules for how a board meeting is conducted. Excuse me, this is a meeting conducted in public. It's not a meeting in which people call out. If you wish to speak, you already had an opportunity at the microphone, and you may have, you may have another opportunity at the end of the meeting. Mr. Lumia?
I have a motion to go to executive session.
Okay, we had a motion to go into executive session. Do we have a, for what purpose?
To discuss the particular things.
Okay, to discuss a particular matter?
Yep.
All right, thank you. All right, do we have a second?
It has to be a little clearer.
A little clearer.
Then who you on the board for? You shut it down. How about we shut you down and shut you off?
You have to discuss people's reactions to the board.
Eight point oh two, approval of internal risk assessment for 2016, 2017. Be it resolved that based on the recommendation of the Audit Committee, the Board of Education does hereby approve the 2016, 2017 internal risk assessment of the purchase, utilization, and disposal of textbooks in the district.
Do we have a motion? Mr. Lumia, do we have a second? Mrs. Laval, any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Nine point zero one. Board members may request additional agenda items, discussion items, or requests for information. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Seeing none, we move to comments from the public. Ten point zero one. Again, people have three minutes to speak. This time you may speak on items that are not on the agenda but do pertain to district business.
Good evening. Anthony Cardinale Fishkill. I would like to start tonight by thanking Ms. Kelland and Mr. Lumia for taking the time to speak with me after the last board meeting. I truly appreciate that you approached me and took the time to personally address some of my concerns after such a long board meeting. Mr. Rubin, my comments from the last meeting marked the first time that I've ever addressed this board. I'm not exactly sure why you chose to insult those comments on Facebook, referring to them as "patting". Ms. Kelland and Mr. Lumia respectfully approached me to discuss my concerns, so I'm not sure why you couldn't have.
Excuse me, sir, but you can't mention individual board members at this time. Thank you.
During a discussion that followed the last board meeting, I was asked to reread the entire resolution in question, and as promised, I did. But I still have some concerns. Although the resolution does not state that every single teacher believes in the Common Core, it does state that designated teachers and administrators believe that the curriculum promotes critical thinking. One of the things I still have concerns about is this phrase, designated teachers. One common use of the word designated is assigned. When someone is designated to perform a specific job, they are assigned that job. So when the resolution states that designated teachers believe in the Common Core curriculum, it can imply that our teachers were told to support it. If this was not the board's intention, I would respectfully request that the resolution be revised to make this section more clear. The other night, another board member also shared with me that you had spoken with quite a few teachers, and they agree that the current curriculum does promote critical thinking skills. Now, to be fair, I have not taught using your math curriculum, so I'm in no position to disagree with you. But I think there's a very important follow-up question to ask teachers. Do they think the current curriculum is appropriate for students who are reading below grade level? You see, curriculum should be driven by the state's standards, but many of the math programs available for purchase during the past several years have been updated to reflect the New York Common Core exams more than the actual standards. So as a board, when you get the opportunity, please ask teachers how their struggling readers are coping with this new curriculum, and ask them if they feel the district's RTI support services are enough to help their struggling students succeed. This brings me to my final point of the evening. It seems like this resolution was intended to restate what this board can and cannot do with regard to state testing, as well as address concerns that parents have brought before you. Although the resolution does state areas of improvement that community members wish to see looked into, I feel it does not adequately acknowledge one of the biggest concerns community members have, that based on publicly available information, the exams are in fact developmentally inappropriate. Thank you.
I don't even know where to begin with any of you. I am besides myself as a parent, and you should be ashamed that you call yourselves parents. To sit there and not acknowledge what this woman has done or is trying to do for our children, my children, is disgusting. And you know what? I hope you have every parent knocking on your doors, breaking them down when they got a big problem on their hand. a big problem on their hands with their children, because that's what's going to happen. That's first of all. I'm sick. I cannot believe the way that you people act, as adults nonetheless. I don't know what your personal agenda is here, but it surely is not the children. The children should be the first thing on your minds, and they are not. I'd like to thank Mr. Carrion for your help with my situation with my daughter. I very much appreciate it, and Mr. Zip contacted me last week, so thank you very much for being the only one who does anything around here that actually cares for the children. You should take a note, people. The other thing is, is that I was, I stood up here two weeks ago, and I asked questions about the testing. What, what are we gonna do with the children who are not taking the tests? Where are we putting them? Now that there's no time limit to these tests? We sticking them in the lunchroom? Where are we putting them? When do the children get to have lunch? Do they have to work through their lunch hour to take these tests? Are they eating while they're taking these tests? I have yet to receive a response. I was told put it in writing, because I asked right here. What, well, when will I get a response? Is anybody gonna answer me? And I was told to write it down, which I did. And I left you all my telephone number. Nobody called. Nobody responded. Guess what? Tests are starting next week. The answer to my question is, you have no damn idea what you're doing with these kids. You're gonna have mayhem, is what you're gonna have. We thought we had a lot of refusals last year. I pray that everybody watching this intensifies their refusals, that you have nobody sitting for these tests, so you sit there looking like a bunch of buffoons. I'd still like an answer. I respect you to the point of listening. I may not agree, but as a taxpayer, as a parent who cares about the children in this district, I deserve an answer as to what you're doing with my children during this test time, these sanctimonious tests that you insist upon administering. Where are you putting my kids?
Excuse me. No applause, no interruptions, please, or you'll have, we'll have to ask you to leave. I'm sorry.
My name's Christopher Zaleski, from Walthampton Falls, New York. And my mom taught in Walthampton Central School District, Fishkill Plains Elementary School for thirty-seven and a half years. And she loved the children so much, more than a thousand children she taught. She told me that she chose her battles very carefully with the children. And, um, you know, sometimes children needed more than just math or reading. Sometimes they just needed somebody to love them because they weren't getting love at home. I feel really bad for the teachers and the students. This whole thing is a travesty. The teachers are on tenterhooks. They're concerned about test scores. Learning is no longer fun for the students. It's sad. Even going back before Common Core came, we were already going in the wrong direction on certain things, not allowing kids to go to shop to get vocational skills. Every once in a while, I have a plumber come to my house that probably earns twice as much per year than I do, after going to Binghamton University and getting a degree. So anyhow, I really enjoyed Ann speaking, I'm sorry, I'm not supposed to say your name, but talking about how it's the board's job to let the state know what goes on. It's in communist countries and socialist countries, the, the job is the state tells the people what they want, what they can have. This is America. This is where we let the government know what is good and what is bad. You don't just rubber stamp things. So I really hope you guys reconsider. I hope to see some new faces on the board after the election. And, um, you know, America's really off in a really very interesting tangent, and I can't wait to see what the November elections bring. Good luck, everybody.
Uh, excuse me, sir. I really shouldn't be here right now, because my anger level is beyond containment. But I should have known that this proposal was gonna be frowned upon before I even walked in this place. It's a sad state of affairs when one of the board members has to go to a member who is no longer on this board to have a prepared written speech to shoot it down. I've studied that person for four years. I know his manner of writing, I know his manner of speaking, and it certainly is not yours. The sad part is, outside of the resolution, not one of you, ever, ever, whether it be tonight or in the past, have ever addressed the condition of the children. Never once did you care about their mental state, their emotional state. Did you see them crying after the tests last year? Did you see the vomit on the school desks? The urine on their chairs? Yet you want to keep enforcing what the state tells you what to do, and you in turn wanna tell the public who put you in those seats what to do. To me, that's controlling. To me, do I dare use the word communist? We're not there yet. As far as no applause, I looked up everything. I worked in city government years ago. Do you wanna send letters to the legislature, the Congress, the Senate, and forbid them to applaud after a speaker is through speaking? Because that's what goes on in those houses. We don't use names, that's why I don't give you my name when I come up to speak, as if you didn't know it already. I was raised with respect. Where have you people lost yours? I'm older than every one of you on this board. No respect. Did it mean that I raised my child with none? No, my child has a lot of respect, and so do my grandchildren. I'm not here just for my two grandchildren. Four years ago, I professed to be every child's grandmother. I'm fighting for every child in every school that they are being stepped upon and propelled into a useless future. There isn't gonna be one of them in twenty years from now that can speak off the top of their head like I can, or like you can. They aren't given the tools now. I see what comes home sporadically with my grandchildren. It is so sorely lacking in education, it's sickening. Where are the weekly spelling tests, vocabulary? It's not there. Yet you're gonna teach them about a changed history that's fictitious. Get off your schtick, people. Start acting like human beings. Start putting these children first.
Good evening, everybody, again. First, I wanna commend everybody from years past, not too recent, not too far along ago. I would say that you conduct less confrontational meetings, so for that, I applaud you. But in that same vein, I would ask you to reconsider limiting the applause for some people that can be deemed confrontational and oppressive of speech, particularly when we're able to applause for other events or other commentary during meetings. That doesn't detract, or that's not any indication that the board supports any particular speaker. It's just that I think it's less confrontational to the parents or to the community, and gives them, allows them to use that three minutes of their time. So if I wanted to have everybody applaud for me for the rest of my three minutes, I don't think you can actually stop that. So, the voice of the community has made effective against Common Core. Consider what we've been able to do for the teachers in our state, where they are no longer being used, Common Core is no longer being used as part of the appraisal. I would ask that maybe, while you did vote on the resolution, so let's consider, as a community, as a board, maybe getting together and forming a group, committee, however you wanna call it, where we lead, not just the district, but the state, in doing what's best for our kids. And maybe we can find common ground to lead that charge, and instead of just being lemmings or people who respond, maybe we can actually be the leaders that we want our kids to be. Again, I applaud the students and their achievements, particularly the two students who performed here. But I also wanna mention that, I think this is, haven't been to too many meetings recently, but the two that I've been to, there's been an absence of recognizing other students. For instance, we have a group of students from Jay and Ketchum going to Rochester in just a few weeks for the FBLA state final competition. Has anybody mentioned that? Are you not proud of that? I am, because my son is one of those students. By the way, he came in first in the region of the. So, again, I thank you for that, and who, I thank you for everything that you've done, and I look forward to in any way engaging, oh, another thing I wanted to mention, the issue about your state elected officials, they can have an impact. So I disagree with you to some extent, Ms. LaValle. They can't, if I'm allowed to mention her name, they can't have an impact, because there is a Common Core implementation panel that, with our district being the eighth largest in the state, and the other tens of thousands of students in Southern Dutchess who are not represented on that panel, we should fight to have a voice. You can have your elected officials fight to have a voice on that panel. And to that end, my time is up, so I thank you for your time and your efforts.
Good evening. My name is Emmanuel Marinaro. I'm from the town of Fishkill. First of all, I wanna thank everybody for listening, and when I was listening to your conversation regarding the resolution, two things really were strong in my mind. I see the board is mostly of, I would say, early, individual, very responsible. I would like to ask, did you guys, when you went in a school, learn the same way as Common Core is being taught today? Uh, excuse me. I remember that we had no child left behind. Has that produced good results? Have we increased the knowledge that we administer to the children in our schools? Uh, I don't think so. The test scores don't tell us that. We spend in New York State twenty-one thousand dollars per child, and yet we're falling behind in reading and math. The doctor on the board said that we have to compete with the rest of the world. The doctor, I don't think she is a native of this country, just like myself, but we came from other countries where we did not, we have not been taught the same way as we teaching our children today with Common Core. And yet we have been successful with it in our lives. She was able to become a doctor in this country. Right now, most of the students, they, they are very successful in this country, are foreign students. Are they taught Common Core in their countries? And we looked at that. We just wanna take to the children of our community what our government is telling us. There is, there is something that you guys should really look at. It's called the New World Order. Bush one, and Bush two, no child left behind. This is creating a nation not to compete with the foreigners, but to actually be subdued to the rest of the world. This is a political movement. I would like to really, some of you people that sat on these important boards, to do some homework. This is just not about creating a movement for our kids to learn, because they're not learning. Right now, they're, they're not learning. You know, if they were, I would be the first one to say, "Thank you." The way we're teaching our children doesn't work. Kids come out of high school today, and the first thing that they have to do, they go to Dutchess community to take remediation classes. There is an issue with that. Where kids before graduated and they were at a college level, today we have to go to college four years to be able to get a job as a police officer. This is a problem. So I wanna thank you, I want you, please pay attention. If we are here to bring our concerns, because we care about our children, we care about our education, and we care about the force of education. Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. Thank you very much for serving as board members, and there's so much seriousness in this crowd, I wish I could think of a joke, but the education of our children is no laughing matter, and I really appreciate even the people who've come out tonight. It's not a wonderful night. I know many of us are getting back from our holidays, and some people are just waking up from sleep, but there is a big sleep. But I do wanna thank the board for the resolution that was passed, because in that resolution, it actually said that the Common Core is a political agenda. Those were your words. And I hope that you do consider the resolution that Ms. LaValle has placed forward. Let's look to the future of Common Core, and let's look at the Every Student Succeeds Act. Workforce development is the agenda behind this, and just gonna come up with some ideas here. We have limited STEM, it makes it impossible for many to go to a competitive university. That's not the American way. The children will be led down a pathway to career in college, which means little. When I was on vacation, I came back from, what was it, Rhode Island, and met some woman who's in a state that already has the Common Core further along, and she said by eighth grade, the kids have to decide what they wanna be in life. And I know some of us are still trying to decide what we wanna be in life. Eighth graders make preferences about their career, which is not shared with parents, except as a done deal in this particular agenda. Without exposure to the full books and not just selected paragraphs, children's worldview is limited and stilted. Free will is limited in this agenda. The curriculum will be hidden from interested teachers and parents who won't be able to do anything about what is being taught on computer-based instruction. There is no transparency to assure broad education. Children will be molded in, molded into a compliant workforce, this is the agenda, and all the documentation is there, you can look on the Department of Labor as well as the Department of Education. We happy to send you the links, I know I've communicated with you in the past, and you have looked at some of the materials I've, I've sent to you. I represent the children who don't have a voice, I represent the Hispanic community. My second language is Spanish, and I do hope that all the immigrants that come here for the beautiful American public education system that have sent people to the moon and have allowed us to dream and think and create and really make America great and exceptional, that these immigrants will have that same dream. However, the Common Core is closing doors, and I really am very grateful for you to listen and to hear and just to want to know the truth. And again, thank you very much for serving on the board, because it's not an easy job. The politics behind this is tough, but please stand up for the truth, and God bless you, and have a wonderful rest of your evening.
Hello. Mike Cola, Hopeful Junction, student of John Jay High School. Sorry. Always wanted to do that. I'd like to address the issue of Common Core from a student's perspective. Forgive me for my lack of etiquette, I wrote this while sitting down in the room, and I had no intention of speaking. But the issue here is that, being a student, fairly well-connected, as I'd like to imagine, I have yet to meet a student who has been in favor of Common Core. Quite frankly, I would like to commend Ms. LaValle, I believe, for her efforts and her passion. And equally important, speaking for what we believe, I hope that you only don't dismiss me as you have her and her ideals, because as a student, these are discussions that we are aware of, because despite your sentiments, we are the ones being subjected, subjected to your quote un. subjected to a quote-unquote "test", despite, I may not believe "test", but I think it's fairly clear. Though I may not applaud the methods of those with which I sympathize, I wholeheartedly believe that they are justified, because the disconnect between yourselves and your students is profound. I apologize if I'm being too forward, but the fact that I can come to this meeting for the first time and be generally repulsed is a serious issue. Thank you for your time, and I can only hope that the fact that students stood up to say anything at one of these meetings isn't enough to jar you. But like I said, for that, I can only hope.
I cannot top that at all. That was incredible. Sorry, but you deserved it. That was almost as good as the musicians, in a different kind of way.
Ladies and gentlemen, I have attended a great many town board meetings, zoning board, planning board meetings, county legislature meetings, and in none of them is applause or outbursts permitted. Please let's commit, uh, keep the decorum of the meeting so we can hear the people who are speaking.
Hi, good evening, again, morning, Ryan. I'm very, very much taken away with the musicians that played this evening. And I couldn't see the young fellow playing, but the girl, if you did not notice the smile on her face. I, I can't remember the last time I saw a student enjoy something as much as she did tonight. And that's a shame, because that's what kids are not getting anymore. You're not seeing the smiles. You're not seeing any form of enjoyment. It's all being ripped away. And for those who don't wanna listen to this tonight, please, by all means, stay away for the rest of the year and don't bother coming back. And while you make it one night, it's beyond me. Because I'm sitting here watching the eyes roll for one night that you bother to show up in months, and I don't wanna see the face. It really makes me sick. The other thing I wanna bring up is, I believe that everybody in this room, everybody at this table, has gone out and voted. You pick a candidate, and you vote. Hopefully, whoever it is you vote for fulfills your expectations, whether it be what their promises on a campaign trail, you like their ideals, whatever the reason is. But if they are falling short, do you react to that? I'm sure you do. You're the voice for the person that you voted in. That is what these parents are here. We are taxpayers. You're working for the taxpayer. We voted you in. It's our voice. Take it another level. We're the parents of the kids that you're hurting. We will sit there and clap. And, and, you know what? Compared to what you're doing to these kids, and there was throwing up on tables, there was peeing in chairs. This is what the parents hear when the kids come home. And don't roll your eyes, because it has happened. We are mama bears, papa bears. Nobody else is standing up for our kids but us. Now, I'm gonna be honest with you. I'm not surprised at all with the reaction to this resolution at all tonight. I very much expected it. But it was telltale that I hope everybody that's live streaming sees, including staff, that only two were willing to have a discussion about the whole thing. That's the telltale here. So, sit here, wait for Albany to do what? I'm not gonna wait for Albany to do anything. I'm not. They're not doing the job that they were hired to do. It's up to us, including you as a taxpayer, that voted Albany in, to get up out of those chairs, get up to Albany, and tell them what they're doing wrong. Don't sit here and start creating budget numbers, pulling money out of the taxpayers. It's not there. We're a dry bucket. Where, what are you thinking of? What are you thinking of? Do your jobs, get out of your chairs. People expect you to do a job. Now get up and do it.
Thirty minutes are up. How many more people wanted to speak? Okay, uh, well, I think this gentleman was online, so is that all right if we let him speak? Okay, go ahead, sir.
Thank you. I gotta be honest, I too don't think I'm gonna start with this. Because, to be honest with you, I am not just annoyed, but disappointed this resolution's not gonna go through. These are our children that we're talking about here. Common Core is nothing but a shackle. It is a shackle to the students. You just heard one of them speak, by the way. But it's also a shackle to those teachers that we hold and endure to our children, to teach them. Because let's face it, once those children are there at the school, these teachers just not teach. They are role models, in a way. And what they do, these teachers, I would like to thank you, is they bring out the best in our children. They're supposed to do that. They don't have to, but they do. And I have to admit, the Wapinjers Central School District really does have some of the brightest and best teachers. They do. It's a great school district when it comes to the teachers. It's a great school district when it comes to the parents. But what we need is leadership right now. The teachers need this shackle taken off of them so they can perform. The testing will be done by the parents. We don't need Albany to test them. We know what these teachers can do, because they live in our communities. We know who they are. And we, when we come home as parents, when we speak to our children, we know what, what they are learning, because we care, because we actually take the time out of the day to sit down at dinner with our children as a family and find out just exactly what they've been learning throughout the day. So yes, we know what they're learning. We know exactly what they're learning. But to keep this whole thing with Common Core going, I'm sorry. You're shackling the students. It's not right. They're not gonna learn. As for leadership, with this whole New World Order, let's face it, this is what it's becoming. We need to speak out as parents. All right? A lot of countries years ago didn't speak out. Look what happened during World War II. And I'm not saying it's the same as World War II. But when it comes to my child's education, I will fight for it. And I'm not gonna give in. And I would like to think that most of these parents are not gonna give in. And as for, when you don't see too many parents here, let's sit back and think about that for a minute. I, myself, being a middle-class worker, I could tell you, I do work a lot of midday shifts, eleven o'clock in the morning, seven o'clock at night. We have homes where both parents have to work. They don't always, they don't always have the time to attend these meetings. But I have news for everyone. They are watching. This board is constantly watched. We have cameras here. So before we start making some hasty decisions here, I think the board ought to look at itself. Before it starts really making the decisions it wants to make, we all need to have, we all have tough decisions that we have to make, but we have to also lead with those tough decisions. I would like to see the board lead with that tough decision. Thank you.
I think there was one man in the audience, did he wish to speak? Okay, well, thank you, sir. If they're in a, at this time, do we have a motion for adjournment? Mr. Lumia, second. Mr. Rubin, all those in favor? unanimous.